If everyone's ready, we will start the work session for November twenty-first meeting. We see everybody sitting tonight is not necessarily where they'll be. I've just been working on other things and this part slipped my mind. So Monday night all the new seat assignments will be taken care of. Also, so the members just realize that this is not a work meeting or a voting meeting. So those who come and tuxes don't have to. And I guess if anything else, we will do with as we come to it. We also do not take load in the work sessions because we're not allowed to have a form. Looks like Monday night we're going to have a presentation from Heather Skaggs on what I believe is her third book involving the city of Hoover. We're also going to have declarations for pancreatic cancer awareness month, National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and Indian Heritage Month. Looks like the mayor's going to have appointment or two to plan the zoning commission. We'll have a motion to defer as well as he will have appointments to the transportation board, which we will also vote to defer. The next work session is going to start at four o'clock because the Christmas arriving is at five o'clock. I understand that the Green Valley Choir is going to be there and I'm going to see if we can get Mr. Shaw to sing with them because I saw some video over the weekend. It sounds like you've got a pretty good voice. So number six, we have a budget amendment from Mr. Gager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, there are just a few items here. The first one is budgeting buying forty MDTs for the police department, one hundred thirty-five thousand. That helps keep them on their rotation of about twenty-five percent every year of replacing MDTs. The next item is budgeting an expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars of our drug funds for a survey to be conducted through the Hoover School Foundation.
I heard about that at the UPTC.
And the next item, we also budgeting the receipt of fifteen thousand dollars worth of drug money. And the next item is another hundred thousand that we're budgeting that we received. And then the last item is some title changes within our personnel system.
Title changes and I guess some paper adjustments there?
Yes, one upgrade, yes, sir.
Okay. These funds, since we don't currently have a budget, are they coming out of capital or are they?
No, this is, we're technically amending the sixteen budget, just rolling forward.
So we're reaching back?
We're reaching back, yes.
Very good. Anyone from the council, have a quick? All right, and we will go to item number seven, declaring vehicles and other various items with surplus to be sold at public auction. Ben?
Yes, sir. The city has accumulated a number of items, including, as you can see, two vehicles and a bed of a truck and a number of appliance suits and pieces of furniture, miscellaneous ops, computer equipment, and proposing that we declare those items as surplus and dispose of them by public auction.
Will this be at the public safety center or online?
This, we're trying to do these online on a quarterly basis now to clear them out on a more frequent basis so they don't accumulate and pile up. So an online, the online auction appears to be working for us so far. We're getting, getting very similar proceeds that we experienced with our in-person public auction at the Public Safety Center.
What do you do with something, say, nobody wants to buy a truck there online? What ends up happening with that?
Well, once we declare a surplus, it will, they will, they will attempt to auction it off on our behalf until it sells.
Okay, so just stay there. All right, members of the council, any questions?
Ben, how does, how often does the online auction expire?
They're typically two to three weeks, two to three weeks, and I think it depends on the timing. They try to coordinate the auctions to occur. Sometimes they add items from another agency into our auction. And if we have an occasion where something doesn't sell, they'll hold that item over until it falls within another agency's auction. So, but typically two to three weeks. And we do post notices about those auctions on the city website. So people can take a link to those auctions through our city website.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next, we have item eight, the property located at seventy-two fifty-six Mockingbird Lane and twenty-three oh-one Mountain Oaks Lane, public nuisance. Mr. Wyatt?
Yes, Robert Pack, I should sort of notice some of these two properties and have other details. He can talk to that.
Robert, I didn't see you sitting there. When I saw his name on here, I thought, maybe you're on vacation.
Yes, sir. Yes, but notices have been sent to both of these properties. Both of these properties are vacant and we're just, you know, you already know that word, first hearing will vote to declare a public nuisance and then follow it up with a vacant after that, depending on the vacant.
Our new members may want a little explanation as to process. I don't know if we're going to do it tonight or we're going to do it Monday night. As wishable, council?
I said, yeah.
Okay. All right, Robert?
Okay, um, normal process is a week. If a complaint either comes in through the in-person or over the phone, a citizen will complain about a property. And I take the complaints and we investigate, make sure that it's a valid complaint. At that point, we try to make contact with the owner. If the owner's present, we send notice. Generally, after a week, I'll send a second notice to them that says we're going to have a hearing on the, the next city council meeting. And generally, we get some contact after that. That's really a, that gets attention there. At that point, the, the council votes to declare it a public nuisance. This is under a state ordinance and they declared a public nuisance. And then there's a twenty-one day period between the first hearing and the second hearing. And the city clerk's office, our city clerk's office, they notify the owner of record and they let them know, they let everybody that's shown to be ownership of it. And we get the ownership through the appropriate offices, tax records. We make, sometimes we have to do title searches, a full title search. We do everything we can to locate the owner. Most of the time, these are going to be vacant properties. A lot of times, it's foreclosure, there's a lot, and the banks have them, but a lot of times, they haven't, they haven't taken over the full responsibility yet. Early on, they'll, there's a lot of selling and back and forth. So, you know, it's tracking down who actually has ownership is the hardest part of this. Very rarely do we have a situation that goes the whole thing where there's somebody living there. It's just in Hoover, it hasn't happened that much. It's, at the second hearing, y'all would vote, the city council would vote for a vacant, which, oh, it works. Usually, within the same week, we'll go out and cut, cut the grass. And then that takes care of the process as far as that. If any liens would be up to the council to vote on if that's something they wanted to do on that route. This past year, fourteen cases came to, no, sixteen came to the council and six of them were cut by the city. So I don't know if there's any questions on that.
What is the average cost for the city for handling these cases?
I'm going to be hon, I, I don't know the full cost. I, I do know Public Works handles it and they're going to have the cost of equipment and their man hours and so that, that's something I can answer on that.
Tommy, do you have an idea?
Uh, I can get it for you. We'll, it's usually about four guys over there. Usually takes a day at the most for four guys cleaning up depending how grown up or the work we're dealing with.
Okay. I know in the past administration, there are fines and the option to place liens on property within the property maintenance code. Obviously, I think we have some updating needs to be done and hopefully we'll deal with that not long after the first of the year. But the last administration chose not to file these. I personally, and our city attorneys may be able to give me some inspiration, I guess. I'm concerned about using taxpayer-funded projects for the improvement of private property. And thus, I guess I'd like to ask your opinion on whether or not we should start filing these things.
Well, the code provides, and we can provide you with a summary of the process, but the code does provide a mechanism to file a lien and have those collected with the municipal act for the law taxes.
Right, I understand that. I just, I just think that we should start doing it. I don't know about any, anybody else, I'm just one person up here.
Well, I guess one question that goes with that. I've heard that these two properties, at least one of them, has happened multiple times. Do we, do we have any kind of count on these properties and how many times it's been done?
This, yes, sir. The one on Mockingbird that the city actually cuts early in the year. And this, this other one is the first time. The one on Mountain Oaks is the first time on it.
Twice on once and twice on one and one on the other.
Yes, sir. It's the second time on Mockingbird. That one has been vacant for a while, but a neighbor cut it one time. It's actually, could have been the third time up, but a neighbor cut it, tried to help, and then city cut it once, and now we're up for it again.
And so is that, each of those times, you have to go through the whole process of notifying and finding the people? And your estimate of what it costs, we should include that because that takes a lot of time to get back and forth. Maybe more time than, than actually going and cutting it, so.
Yes, sir. There's some man hours in that, running it down and the time spent with that.
Going back to the citizens' complaint, do the citizens have to file their names?
It, it helps in our office, you know, to work the complaint out. So we do try to get a citizen's name for our own use. We don't, it, it's our policy not to release the name, you know, to any, to anybody that's been complaining, we do not release that name. We do encourage you to give it to us if we have questions, follow-up questions.
And what's the process if, if contact is, is made and we find that it's a person that's infirm or elderly that can't take care of the property?
Yes, sir. If that, if that did happen, I, I have enough leeway, I could try to work. It's very rare that that happens because a lot of times churches have stepped in or neighbors have helped. It is to that point, I, I've actually worked with people, trying to give them ideas and encouragement on, you know, different routes to take on that. It, to be honest, it does not happen that much where we're going after someone that's just, has a problem with money. It's generally a vacant property, the property, the house has already been lost. It's, you know, it's, there's only two cases that I know where a house was occupied and they were just not coding it for their own reasons. They, it wasn't money in those cases, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counselor, in regard to the lien, going back to that one, we need to know the cost of, what is the cost legally to process the lien versus what the cost is, the time it's going to check for us to actually cut the rights.
Okay. I can.
That could be.
I would think filing the lien would be relatively insignificant.
Okay.
And the, the code provides that, that the lien should be filed. And so, I can get you that in the morning.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, item nine, authorize the mayor to execute amendment to the health flexible spending plan administered by Murphy Meadows Incorporated. Mr. Lewis, I understand you have some comments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, this amends the existing contract with Murphy Meadows, who administers our flexible benefits plan. What this amendment will do will allow our employees to contribute up to the annual maximum as set by the IRS each year. That, that, that number fluctuates each year. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. This will allow us, our folks who voluntarily participate in this, to, to contribute up to that maximum amount should they choose to do so.
Has this been brought to the employee advisory committee?
No, sir, it is not. And this is strictly voluntary benefit. This, this amendment, nobody has to contribute the maximum. It's, it's up to the employee how much they want to contribute.
Very good. Any questions?
Yes, what is the maximum for contribution?
Uh, in two.
This year?
This year, it's two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Next year, in twenty seventeen, it's going up to twenty-six hundred dollars. We have a lot of folks who max out on it. So we want to be able to capture, even if it is just a fifty dollar increase, we want to be able to capture that amount.
Thank you. Next item is something that we probably should have taken care of during the organizational meeting, but failed to do so. It's going to be to authorize the appointments of public defenders for our municipal court. I understand that Mr. Quay had to go out of town and fan the concerns.
Yes, sir. I'm here for that one though. Resolution is just to reappoint our two public defenders, Mr. Dick Kelly and Lee Barnes. The costs actually come out of the payroll tax, but in the cost to the city.
Right. I understand those figures are the same?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Smith, Mr. Till, that's four thousand dollars for each defender, correct? It's not split.
Correct.
All right, moving to item twelve, we have resolution to authorize the mayor to execute amendments to tower license agreements.
Uh, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Uh, resolution fifty-five oh-two dash sixteen, item number eleven.
Yes. Yeah. Um, authorize city of Hoover to participate in the twenty-seventeen severe weather preparedness tax holiday. Mr. Lopez.
Yes, sir. This will authorize the city to be able to participate with the state for tax-free holiday where there would be no sales tax, charge any type of severe weather type of good such as tapes or plywood or anything like that. It's limited to sixty dollars per item and at one time, one thousand or less generated. Looking at the figures, it's really the de minimis for the amount of money that we lose. So it's, it's a good thing that we do.
And what are the dates again?
The dates, they were twenty-fourth or they were twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth.
All right. All right. I'll have to apologize, I had a Jack moment for a second. Resolutions to authorize the mayor to execute amendments to the tower license agreements between Crown Castle, formerly known as Penitent Towers, and the Hoover Police Department regarding public safety communication antennas at the old Tyler Road site. I guess we have resolution fifty-five oh-three, which means the second amendment to the government entity tower license agreement to update information within the lease documents in preparation of an upgrade to the radio system. Ben?
Yes, sir. The, the Public Safety Communications Division is preparing for the upgrade to their radio systems. They've been reviewing the equipment that is on the existing towers they've been leasing space on and found that there were some discrepancies in the Crown Castle records as to what, what was attributed to being belonging to the city of Hoover and what was actually belonging to the city of Hoover. So this is to correct those records on Crown Castle's system and make sure that we have all of that information correct and accurate. We don't want to pay for something that somebody else, that belongs to somebody else and vice versa. So this has no financial impact to us, so there's no budgetary impact or expense impact in the future.
You have, you have come to a meeting of the minds and they agree.
That's right.
Very good. The next resolution will be third amendment to the antenna site leased scheduled to extend the term of the lease and add additional renewal terms.
That's right. This, this particular proposed resolution addresses the fact that one of the leases at the Hoover Tower site expired October thirty-first, and so this is an opportunity for us to renew it for three years and add two potential automatic renewals of three years each onto the, the existing term of the lease. This doesn't have a direct impact on our, our budget or expenses, but there's an automatic three percent annual escalation clause in there. So our lease fees have been going up by three percent each year and this just continues that process. Our lease fees increased by three percent over the prior year.
Mr. Attorney, we're in a good shape above both resolutions at one.
That's correct.
Thank you. Next, we have item thirteen, authorize the mayor to execute lease agreement with hardened properties to extend the lease for the police substation located in Bluff Park Village Shopping Center, twenty-one forty-six Tyler Road, Route two oh four.
Mr. Wester?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, this is an extension of the lease that we currently operate our police substation in Bluff Park out of. It's about eight hundred square feet. We've been doing it since about two thousand and six up there. This would be proposed to be a five-year extension of that lease. The lease will increase a hundred dollars per year. It's at a very favorable rate for the city. Community seems to enjoy it. We know we like having it up there and the shopping center owner enjoys it also.
And what is the current rate? Do you think this?
Uh, the current rate will be, or the new rate will be forty-three hundred per year. We'll make one-time payment at the beginning of the year and then it will go up to forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred. There's currently some legal, little, little legal things that are being worked through with our city attorney. So we may get a, a slightly modified lease, but all of the, all of the terms and conditions that they agreed to by Monday night.
Saying any adjustments would be housekeeping and that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any questions?
Mr. President, this is a question for Chief Ursus. How challenging is it for you, because we have certain areas of our city that, Jefferson County, Birmingham, when crime occurs there, especially in the Bluff Park area, is it challenging to work those cases, knowing that another jurisdiction is in ownership of those cases?
This is a question. This is something that happens with different jurisdictions.
Okay, my bad. Especially in Bluff Park, particularly where we had a burglary of an ice cream parlor. You know, we try to, of course, it's not in the city, so we don't actually work it. The other jurisdiction works and we certainly talk to their detectives on burglaries and try to work and work with them. Because generally speaking, people that are committing those type of crimes, even though they may not be in the city, they're probably doing the same things in the city. So, you know, it's just something that we've been doing for years.
Is it easier for you, us to look at, you know, annexing those portions or will it really make a big difference?
Actually, I don't think it'd make that big of a difference. We certainly don't have that many, that many crimes that occur, particularly as we're talking about.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this is a five-year lease?
Yes, sir.
Chief, will you see this facility being used for the next five years?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a great spot. I know that our motor scouts who work a lot of traffic in the Bluff Park area like to go there, do reports, be seen. You know, it's a small little area, but we negotiated what I thought several years back, a very cost-effective lease to the city. We're only spending, you know, three hundred something, four hundred dollars a month for it. So I think it's certainly something that I think the public wants us to be there. I think that it adds something for the officers got a place to stop there and do reports and so on.
Right. Thank you.
Chief, I do have one question and it's just that I don't remember whether it's there or not. Is there a call box that's available on the exterior that we go to dispatch?
No.
Would there be any value there for somebody thinking they're coming to a police substation and being able to call somebody? I know they're not trolling if they're there.
Right.
So I just wanted.
I think that's something to sort of look at and expenses and that, it's a nominal expense to do so.
Maybe we can look at that in the next budget.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? None. We go to item fourteen, authorize the mayor to execute a natural gas supply agreement with Alabama Gas, the installation of gas service to the new Fennel Center at the Hoover Metropolitan Complex. Mr. Wester?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, this is an agreement that Algasco will, will install a new gas line to feed the Fennel Center. And in lieu of the ninety, approximately ninety thousand dollars to install the line, they're agreeing to utilize gas for heating and cooking for the next ten years out there.
Any questions? If not, item fifteen, resolutions to authorize the mayor, I guess it's going to be a lot of work. Resolutions authorize the mayor to execute easement and right-of-way deeds related to the Hoover RV lot expansion project. Till?
Yes, sir. Alabama, this is for Alabama Power. They had relocated a line and they, and we need to grant them a new easement around their new power line.
We will vote both of those resolutions simultaneously. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't answer the second one. I realized you were taking both of them. I apologize. The second one is, is Jefferson County sewer easement for the, the main sewer lines that are feeding the RV park expansion.
Thank you. Item sixteen, will be the second reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-three sixteen, an amendment to chapter two, article two, city council, division one, regarding meeting agendas, order of business, and adoption of Robert's rule of the order. I guess, I know I've got a little conversation. I know that Mr. Light, I kind of spearheaded this conversation, so maybe if you want to have a little conversation.
Sure. Yeah, this, Mr. Smith, this ordinance really codifies what has long been held in this body since I became a member up four years ago in the development of the agenda. It's, it's been long held that two or more members of the council can get an item on that agenda, but it's never been right. So simply this adds a few lines to our code, which puts in written terms exactly how two or more members of the council can get an item on the agenda. Furthermore, it specifies that any item to be added needs to be the city clerk's office by noon on Wednesday prior to work session so that her office can have time to get along there and get everything in order for us to discuss the work session on the following day.
One question I have for the mayor and staff, is that a viable deadline? I know sometimes we have bids and maybe go ahead and put a bid in there, but you're not ready to make a recommendation. Having it ready on Wednesday at that hour, is that a viable requirement for the mayor and staff?
It is. We can work within the wishes of the council and everything.
Mr. Poser, you had communicated with me about some adjustments you would like to see. Maybe you'd like to talk about that.
I talked a little about it and my main concerns, the ones I've answered, I was just making sure that it gave the proper authority in here for the two councilmen to do, to do what they were doing. And it also listed that the council president was able to add, obviously. And that came out of the league municipalities meeting there at night, too, where we were talking to other folks and they were, everyone was allowed that items of agenda. So I just want to clarify the powers and that, but it has been clarified.
Okay. Obviously, this would also be used in a situation bringing two or more members would be if I being the president am not in the same line of thought as other council members. And this gives them a way to bring something to the council without my authorizing. The one, there are a couple of requests I would make. Let's see. In the third paragraph of section two dash thirty-four, it says, "For regular meetings, no item for which complete information has not been submitted to the city clerk, no later than noon on Wednesday prior to the meeting." as well as regular sessions of the city council. Of course, it's rare that, that you're going to see anything come after the agenda's been set on Thursday. It probably, really doesn't matter that that is included. And I guess, should there be any language that talks about whether or not consideration has been made by the president, or is that just silent, and the president has not responded in the affirmative before any such actions take place?
You're speaking to a first refusal basically.
Yes, sir.
You're speaking to a first refusal option basically, right?
Okay. Is there any need for that to be written, or is that assumed?
I'm not, I'm not sure it's relevant. If, if Mike and I decide we want to put something on the agenda, and we send you an email and her email, if you say yes or no, it doesn't matter at that point, right?
But do I get an opportunity to say no?
I would hope that's true. I would think that's, yeah, I would think.
Okay. Well, I guess that's my intention, you know, instead of two people get together on every meeting and then, and then just place things on the agenda without...
So, is that, is that what you're concerned about there, is that?
No, I'm not concerned with this body, but this is going to be ordinance-going generations to come unless they change it.
Mr. President, I, I do believe you keep things great, assumption kind of getting away, so if it's assumed, it's right-handed, and a first-ordered refusal, I think is a really good thing to have. I would think that the chair would be your decided officer, and most of the council members would discuss things with that person, so he would have a better idea to know, to know about the topic and how others are feeling about a particular topic. We're also talking about ninety-five percent of the agenda is created by the mayor anyway, so we're talking about very de minimis amount of things going on on the agenda, but I believe it needs to be a first-ordered refusal from the mayor on that.
From the mayor?
Also, I mean, I mean, council president. Also, when that was created, was it created with a five-member board? With us being a seven-member board, should it be three, should three council members should be in together when presenting something to be put on the agenda?
I think that would be up to the body to decide by Monday night.
I guess, I see what you're talking about with the first refusal. It's communicating something, but I don't see why, I guess I don't understand that process, what it asks the process, and I think, you know, some other questions are going about that. If it, the president can always say, or through one way or another, can communicate that this is not something I put in there, or it can be part of the record that this was submitted by two councilmen or did not commit it. The president writes out, it would be on the record if this two, so that's on the record. It's not like it's a gray area or people don't know what's going on. Yeah, so I guess, I mean, if you look at what other, what other cities have done, a lot of other cities have almost this exact same process. Some of them actually say any single council can put something on there. And so, I think it's kind of a commonly accepted practice among a group of councils. It just depends on how they operate. I think it's important that the people who elected us know that there's no, nothing going on, you know, to get something on the agenda. They elected people at large. If we were, if we were district-based or something like that, I can see where, you know, we might have a different process, because districts can kind of get into contentious things. That happens in some cities, but I think it's an important thing to communicate to, to our citizens that just elected us that they know that who they elected at large can put something on the agenda, and it's on the record, you know, that, that's the way, that's the way. So, I, I see what you're talking about as far as making sure that it's not vague as to how it got there, but I think we can, I think we can be pretty clear what happened. There's still commentary on YouTube.
Any other thoughts?
My concern is the Wednesday noon deadline. I, I question whether it should be a policy that the, the mayor staff enforces from there, or do we really need it as an ordinance? Because if we have, have it as an ordinance, it says here anything after noon on Wednesday, we then have to have four council members provide verbal written consent to the council president. But if the mayor has to have something on there at the last minute, he then has to track four of us down to get verbal consent. So, with it being an ordinance, if it was just a policy, he still has leeway to work, work, work with it.
Verbal would be right before meeting, too, right? I mean, if we were all, if something needed to be added, wouldn't that be the way it would work? If, if it's verbal and it was right before being an emergency, and there's four people there, which is a quorum anyway, they could, they could approve that, right, to have it added last minute?
Margie, what is, then, a historic policy or items that might need to be added to an agenda after the work session?
Typically, that will, that will normally come up at the work session if there's something that, in the past, normally that will come up at the work session if there's something that feels needs to be added, but honestly, I've, we've not really had that come up that much, especially beyond the work session. But it, it happens occasionally that something will come up that maybe a staff member realizes that there was a time crunch on something that they weren't aware of, and so we have had that happen, but typically I would call the council president, say, is it okay with you to add it? So, it's, I would have, if you all want to.
And if there's a true emergency, like an old testament, block is blood, something terrible we have to respond to, I mean, that's an emergency meeting, that's twenty-four hours, right? And in that way, the way we're state law, we can, we can call an emergency meeting, and that's separate from all of this, so we can have that.
Mr. President, I do agree that possibly the council should have a cutoff date, but from a mayor's standpoint, dealing with operations, he will be dealing with things in the last few hours of the timeframe, so I believe that he needs to have the flexibility to add things on the agenda for running the operations of the city. We'll be with governance in a sense, hold him accountable, but I don't believe they're taking that away, that flexibility away from the mayor when handling city business. The council, I can understand that deadline, but not the mayor.
And that was one of the reasons why I thought of, like with Ben, with the bids, sometimes they're open and they're going through the process of determining those that are, are, have properly bid, and he might, he might know who the low bidder is, but he might not know who the lowest responsible bidder is until Monday sometime, so he might need to put it on the agenda and then just not fill in that blank until he has determined the lowest responsible bidder. Does that make sense?
Mr. Schmidt, with regard to bids, we have flexibility of really scheduling those to be opened at any, at any point in time, so we have a little flexibility there, but there is a period of time that we need to perform due diligence to determine who is the responsible bidder. It's, we have customarily used Wednesday afternoons as a bid opening time, but we're trying to slide that to the prior Wednesday as much as possible. But oftentimes, there is a time crunch where somebody needs a particular product, good or service, in a short period of time, but we're, we're comp, you know, compacting that length of time as much as possible, so I, I'd like to say there's, there's one way it can be done, but there's really different circumstances in each particular bid that could come into play that would say we could schedule it earlier, or we're going to have that compact scheduling.
There may be times, and, and so what we would do would just to include the fact that you're going to be ready to, to award a bid, we just place it on the agenda, but we want to know possibly until Monday morning who you have determined to be the lowest responsible bidder.
That's, that's correct. If, if it's something that is, time is of the essence, and we're trying to meet all the requirements, review requirements, if you could potentially carry over to a Monday morning. But we like to have it done before the end of the week, but there's a potential that it could carry over until Monday sometime, certainly.
Mr. President, you're talking about the Monday before the, the actual, the Monday before.
Monday after the meeting, then you have the following Monday to make that.
So, technically, and sorry to be pointing at this, the, what just happened, that just happened, correct? Because we have a contract that's there, but we have tweets to make to it before the final, before the final process. So, is there anything in this language here that would prevent something like just happened in this work session happening in the future?
So, Mike, you're saying that, that it would be on the agenda, but this is not specific as to adjustments within an item. So, like, for instance, like replying zoning, if, for say, someone gets on the agenda and they decide to continue it, or they decide to, to pull it, then it would be on the agenda to be removed, but you're saying when it's on the agenda, it's okay for adjustments to happen within that item as long as it's on the agenda. This would be for something that is not on the agenda at all?
Yeah, I guess that's what, that's my question. If they, what would just happen here, where we have a contract and it's going to be, it's going to change sometime between the work session and the full session, I guess that's my question for them, is, is this language prevent what just happened, or taking that ability away? Is that the question, correct?
And I guess, Tim, he's kind of talking about the adjustments that you spoke of that I asked was housekeeping and security only, and really didn't change the intent of the contract, so.
That's right. You know, and in this particular instance, it's strictly some, some legal language that the two attorneys on both sides need to, need to hammer out. What, what we're presenting to you is the terms and conditions will not change in that, in that lease agreement. Well, it's already been agreed to between all the parties. We're just, we're just hammering out some fine tuning with, with the city attorney and, and their attorneys, and we would expect, you know, we'd expect that contract to be better than it, than it is right now for, for the city itself.
Well, I'll go back to the language that's written here. It says, "For regular meetings, no item for which complete information has not been submitted." So, that's incomplete information. There's a lot of gray areas here, and that's, that's why I just feel like it should be more of a policy instead of an ordinance.
Or we could make the ordinance natural we need it to. If it's complete information, what, how could we change that to where complete information, because if it's complete at the time, it's complete, but if there's changes to it between, does this preclude changes happening between the?
I think as long as there are no substantive changes, that is, they'll meet that test. If they're from ordinance, for example, if you make more than, if you make any substantive change to that, you have to have another reading.
Okay, so, so complete could mean substantive?
There's no intent, is what you're saying, is no intent to, when, when you turn it in, the intent is there that this is complete, the changes are not going to change the ramifications of the outcome.
Correct.
That's what you're saying. So, if there was, if there was something to change it, that would change the language, the intent to, intent to change the outcome of the ordinance.
And if I could ask something about the bids?
I'm sorry?
Typically, what we do on the bids, if they're not sure who, who they're going to award the bid to, we typically will go ahead and prepare a resolution with all the information that we have about the bid opening. We'll have each bidder, how much they bid, and we'll leave the blank as to who it's being awarded to. So, really, that would be the only piece that's missing is, is, is just the staff review and the checking that this affects.
Something else I'd like to bring up, I brought with the mayor and, and, Mr. Posey, prior to this meeting, a number of years ago, the council then took the opinion that bids would no longer be opened during work session. It had been handled that way for several decades before, and it was adjusted to where the city clerk or her designated from her office and the department head or his or her designated would meet the same place at the open bid, so those that bidding could be theirs as well, and they would handle that rather than opening the work session, because then, depending on what's being bid, you could have a three, four-hour work session very, very easily. So, unless I hear any comments to the other, I'd prefer to kind of leave it that way.
Good courage. It's not working, there's no reason to, the chair.
All right, before Mr. Fulton runs out of, the room that was called Little Seventeen, public hearing to consider a request for Mr. Justice Ray Miller, NTM Enterprises Engineers to rezone two parcels, approximately eight foot nine six acres located at eight twenty-one Offert Avenue and twenty-one twenty Tyler Road, from A One Agriculture to PRD Plant Residential Development District. This property is owned by R.W. Carlton and Patricia Clark. This would be the second reading and a motion to a...
As you said, it's nine acres of the Blue Park. Backs up to the Blue Park Village Shopping Center, the corner, it was a small park. Most of it is down by the River Chase United Methodist Church.
Microphone, please.
Look at the second page of the handout. It shows that the same property highlighted in yellow, the River Chase United Methodist Church is located to the south and to the west. A little bit of the property that the butts, the Blue Park Village Shopping Center, then along Tyler Road, there's three or four, two or three parcels, currently on the agriculture that have houses on it.
You said River Chase Methodist, Blue Park?
Oh, I'm sorry, Blue Park Methodist Church, United Methodist Church. And this property is located right close to that intersection. It's proposed to have thirty-five guard homes. The developer did agree to exceed the minimum floor area for dwellings required in that district. In the PRD district, minimum floor area is nineteen hundred square feet. They agreed to build twenty-five hundred square feet, which is comparable to our E-two or residential state like district zoning. This is the same property that was proposed a couple of years ago for the Walmart neighborhood grocery store, and that commercial zoning was strongly objected to by the area, neighborhood, the, the people who live in the area, and was not approved by the city. The owners now obviously have come back, have abandoned their desire for commercial use there, have backed, set a family residential zoning request. The lots will be eighty feet wide by a hundred feet deep. They will have a buffer, a long Tyler Road there at the intersection entrance from both main roads coming in with cul-de-sac there at the end. Be a detention pond located here. It's, because we discussed at the planning commission meeting whether or not this was compatible with recently developed residential in the area. You've got townhomes right across Tyler Road from the property, which have lots of, that, which is an average normal for town, about twenty-five feet wide. They are attached dwellings, obviously. The, the guard homes located down here behind Shades Mountain Plaza, were built many years ago. They have roughly fifty-eight to sixty-foot wide lots by a hundred and fifty. They're there, nine thousand square foot lots, a suburban property, I think averages about eighty-five, so they're similar, but the lot width has a lot to do with how compared to the homes look from the street, wider lots, larger setbacks between homes, in this case, much larger homes. So, no longer want to put a Walmart there, they want to put a subdivision. Thirty-five homes on nine acres meets the minimum, meets, does not exceed the nineteen hundred.
Bob, I understand there's some opposition.
There was, I remember, this case was heard quite a while ago. I remember one person in opposition.
One gentleman came, and I, I wouldn't say he was in opposition. He was concerned about the overall density. He agrees it should be residential.
Well, he actually said at the end, he'd rather see commercial.
Oh, did he? Okay. He was the only one that spoke. The gentleman across the road at the townhomes was either elected or de facto HOA president, and he had some questions, but I think we were able to answer his question.
Their, their questions are regarding storm range. There's, there's storm range issues under Tyler, getting water under Tyler and affecting that townhome project. This subdivision will have a detention pond, which is where the stormwater leaves this property. It heads down toward Tyler, so detention, theory of detention pond is that what the engineers say is pre-equals post. More water will come off this property because you're going to be paving some of the houses in, but... Well, he actually said at the end, he'd rather see commercial.
Oh, did he? He was the only one that spoke. The gentleman across the road at the town halls was either elected or de facto HOA president. And he had some questions, but I think we were able to answer his questions.
Their questions are regarding storm range. There's storm range issues under Tyler, getting water under Tyler and affecting that townhome project. This subdivision will have a detention pond, which is where the stormwater leaves this property, it heads down toward Tyler, so detention. Theory of detention pond is that what the engineers say is pre equals post. More water will come off this property because you're going to be paving some of the houses in, but it will not leave the property at a faster rate. So the rate of flow coming off this property will equal what it is today.
Yeah, it's worth noting, Mr. House, that this passed planning zoning, yes?
Yeah, well, yes, sir.
Mr. House, I have a traffic question. This exit is on Offerd Avenue, how close is that to the intersection that is right there where you turn off of Lester on to Offerd? How close is that to that intersection?
Ron Long, our city engineers, the fellow who handles the specifics of that. I don't know exactly, I think we could strike in that left turn lane there.
Thank you, that was my question.
Mr. President, Mr. House, what would the bike ride be on these cars?
I don't know, Mr. Green, I'm not sure. Twenty five hundred square foot home and house location would be significant.
Mr. Leiter, in an effort to keep from throwing Mr. Shaw under the bus, perhaps these that, class planning and zoning, when you occupied that chair, maybe you could help take care of those Monday night?
Hope you have to, yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Item nineteen, public hearing to consider request of Richard A. Johnson, representing SB Development Court, for approval of an amendment to the Blackridge PUD for the purpose of adding one parcel consisting of a hundred and eight acres to be zoned PR one, planning a single family district, medium density. Property is owned by PR Wilburn LLC and is currently not zoned by the City of Hoover. The applicant has made a request that this be postponed until our second meeting in January, being January seventeenth. So we will need a motion and a vote to impair such Monday night. Item nineteen, public hearing to consider the request of Warren Bailey, representing Blue Rain Express Car Wash LLC, for conditional use approval for an express car wash and detailing service to be located at the southwest corner of Highway one nineteen and Tattersall Drive. Property is owned by Ebsco Industries and is zoned C two, community business district. This comes forward complaining zoning without recommendation.
Two, two items I had out here quickly.
We can share.
Mr. President, emergency, we'll just pass this.
Yes, sir. This property is located near the intersection of Highway one nineteen and Highway two eighty. It's owned by Ebsco, and some of y'all may remember that several years ago, Ebsco had a development, hose development that they titled Tattersall, which was going to encompass everything from Greystone way back to two eighty along one nineteen, under sixty, seventy acres. They still have a general layout for that, but they are bringing in parcels individually now to actually develop, rather than developing the larger shopping center first. So this is what would be considered an out parcel to an eventual shopping center in that area that it ever materializes. It backs up to a Lazy Boy, Lazy Boy Store there at one nineteen and two eighty. You have this property, then you have a new purple, virtual zero, which is the white building located just across the street. There was some opposition to this, well, car wash is a conditional use in C two, the property is zoned C two. There are a number of conditional uses in the C two district, and this is one of them. A conditional use requires planning commission and city council approval, using the same process as rezoning, although this conditional use or any conditional use will not change the zoning of the property, it still is zoned C two. We'll just give them additional level of approval to do this one conditional use. So proposing to do a blue rain car wash here on the property. The site plan is the second page of my, of the, my handout. Shows the car wash, the landscaping, which meets the minimum requirements of the city. Parking, how the traffic will circulate through the car wash and back out. There was opposition to this from the Greystone community. Ms. Ludwig was president planning commissioner, expressed concern about the project. Blue rain car wash, as you can see from the renderings there, is blue. And it was blue at the planning commission meeting that it is tonight. They met with Ms. Ludwig and had toned down the architecture and the color of the building so that it is more compatible with the surrounding area. And that's why I handed out these brochures that Mr. Bailey, the owner, the proposed owner, prepared, as they reflect the discussions that they had with. This came from, that's why I was going to ask before, this came with a split vote from the planning commission. We had eight folks there, it came to, I think, four or four tie on this, because there was opposition to the, to the project from Ms. Ludwig. I would say opposition, but concern, and I'm sure she'll be here Monday night, and I'll attempt to speak for her. As I understand it, things have been smoothed over and going to be good.
Any questions?
Mr. President, let's, I'm reading this plan, he's corrected. The aggressive traffic is going on the side streets.
Yes, Offerd Tattersall, Ron, so there's no access on one ninety.
Is this what that is?
No, it's not, Mr. Smith, it's Lazy Boys in the PUD. Zone PC, in fact, everything along there, Fish Market, all along two eighty, there is zone PC. When you see PC zoning, you know that's in a planned year development. The C two zoning is just a straight up C two like we have out here on one hundred thirty one. This property was originally zoned PUD, not originally zoned, at one point was zoned PUD for the Tattersall project, which was a separate. But we have required that if you don't get started on PUD within the year, I think it expires. So it expired by the natural death, so to speak, and reverted back to the underlying zone, which was C two.
Mr. President, this is something that came up in planning and zoning. What is the only, besides the regular zoning, what is the, is there overlay, what, explain that?
This property is also subject to the Highway two eighty overlay district. The corporations who developed the PUDs up and down Highway two eighty, Grandview, Meadow Brook, Inverness, Greystone, were able to orchestrate this overlay district for various jurisdictions up and down the highway, all the way from Holmwood down to Hoover and Shelby County, Jefferson County as well, have adopted overlay district regulations intended to provide uniform regs up and down the corridor. And at that point, also to upgrade the quality or the appearance, if you will, of projects to hopefully match what they have in the PUD. So it's zoned C two, Highway two eighty overlay district, which gives us a little bit more authority on requirements for building materials.
And so, Mr. President, because there's no, because it's really just the zoning and that overlay, the person requesting this has really worked with the community just because it's the right thing to do, not because of the standards in the area or anything like that?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Mr. President, I'd just like to thank Mr. Bailey for being willing to sit down with Ms. Ludwig and other folks from that neighborhood. Common sense, logical people, always come to logical solutions when you do that. I really appreciate you doing that.
Good, thank you.
All right, item twenty, public hearing to consider the request of Keith S. Nelson for conditional use approval for Anthony's Car Wash to be located twenty four twenty John Hopkins Parkway in the ATI Industrial Park subdivision. Property is owned by CMN L L Inc. and is zoned C two, community business district.
This property is located on Highway one fifty. It's located between Alacare, the Alacare Building up on the till, and the new McDonald's, if you will. It's zoned C two, this is a car wash, proposed car wash, so it is a conditional use as we discussed earlier. If we flip to the third page of my handout, you'll see two buildings on there. One is the car wash right next to Alacare, you can see the blue canopy is on this site plan. That is the proposed Anthony's Car Wash. They also show a second building down the hill toward the McDonald's, which is a, probably be a restaurant, and that is not part of this conditional use, but because they're having to construct a driveway up to the property which can serve both buildings and landscaping and parking are working as a unit, that we require them to submit both projects so that you see how they, to work to one another and how there'd be access. Car wash is the only part of the project which is subject to the conditional use. This also has a rendering with it, and it's all car washes are blue now, which will be blue as well. But it'll be a basic rebuilding, as you can see, a little bit more subdued, maybe blue there as highlight color, but reasonable category. Planning commission recommended, subject to two conditions, one, that there are seven parking spaces that are proposed. If you look at the site plan, I won't bore you with the details, but the seven parking spaces located here that are perpendicular to the driveway, they're actually not on the car wash property, that's the parking for the car wash employees. Want to make sure that because that property, those spaces were not located on the subject property, that they be constructed along with the car wash, so they have parking once they get going. And that the owner, there's power company easements, and I think some gas easements which run through this property, was precluded. Installation of some of the landscaping that was required, the planning commission therefore required that what couldn't be put here on the site because of the easements and rights and way to be constructed down at the intersection of this driveway and Bedford Drive, which is the McDonald's access street. And so the last, the second item there is that they maintain, even though it's not on their property, they maintain all the landscaping and some of the now. There was no opposition to this. Any questions?
Tim, I believe when we spoke on this a while back, if you're coming from Shades Crest Road down Highway one fifty, and you make that turn on the Bedford Drive there, it's a bit of a steep turn. And that yield sign is, in my opinion, put in too far, especially with this new driveway coming in as soon as you turn in right there. Have you got a chance to look at that and see if that needs to be pushed back some?
I have had discussions with the city engineer about it, and we're working on that.
Any other questions? If not, item twenty one, set public hearing from Monday, December nineteenth, six p.m. to consider the following requests that come forward with positive recommendations for planning and zoning. CTBTS LLC requesting conditional use approval to allow the development of a family entertainment center known as Circus Trips. Be located at six thousand nine Tattersall Drive and Tattersall Park. Property is owned by Ebsco Industries and is zoned C two, community business district. Next, we would be dealing with the payment of the bills. The committee assignments have not yet been handed out. Normally, I would have asked Mr. Green to take on that duty for Monday night, but he's going to be out of town. And so just for ease of operation, Mr. Leiter, if you could take care of that for Monday night. Committee assignments will be handed out that evening, and we'll be talking about some committees, some good committees that are likely to be stood up in the coming months. Any comments or questions from the council? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything? With that, we're done.